School District Number 531 to order on April 7th at 6:00 PM. Can we have attendance, please?
Jeremy.
Here.
David.
Here.
Lisa.
Here.
Carrie.
Here.
Kelly.
Here.
Nadia.
Here.
Alicia.
Here.
Our vision Byron Public Schools, a community of learners committed to making the world a better place. Mission is to learn, share, innovate, inspire. Priorities are to personalize learning in the pursuit of academic excellence. Inspire students and staff to develop their character, share their talents, and apply their learning, and maintain excellence in resource management. Do we have any questions or discussion on the agenda items?
I've made a motion to approve the agenda as presented.
Motion on the floor, do we have a second?
Second.
Motion and second, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, agenda is approved. Administrative reports, were there any questions on any of the reports as you reviewed them?
No, it was fun to hear what's going on in all the buildings.
Yes, great reports, wonderful. But I guess not hearing anything for discussion there, we'll move on to our discussion items and we will turn the floor over to Jen Hegna for our technology presentation.
All right. First of all, I just want to mention, highlight in my board report that the Byron AI Task Force has been working on some guidelines and the task force, or sorry, the guidelines are in the report and this will be eventually in our secondary schools in the handbooks. So the guidelines aren't necessarily board approved, but the handbooks are. So we just want to be, I want you to be aware of the guidelines. But I'm really proud of the team's work and looking forward to getting them up and running and getting some feedback on them. So today I'm just gonna discuss our aging infrastructure and growing needs. These are essential investments that I think we need to talk about with, you know, operations and safety and learning. So first thing is, is I consider technology one of the bloodlines of, you know, a digital landscape. If you don't have infrastructure, we're pretty much, you know, blacked out from operations to learning, learning to safety. There's so many things that are connected to technology and in the event of not having the adequate infrastructure, we could really be in a, in a pretty rough situation. So I'm gonna share some of the things that are up and coming, you know, that we need to consider for the future. And unfortunately, some of it's pretty, coming up very soon. So basically, infrastructure, the overview is safety and security, network connectivity, and classroom technology. There's, there's a term that we use in the tech field and it's called end of support. So we have, you know, discontinued products where you can no longer purchase them, but we also have something called end of support. So it's beyond the end of life. It's, it's where they are no longer gonna be giving updates, there's no more patches. For instance, we're, we're working right now to upgrade all of our computers from Windows 10 to Windows 11 because in October, basically, Windows 10 is sunsetted. No more patches, no more updates, and as you can understand, when you don't have patches and upgrades, that's a cybersecurity risk. So, end of support basically means there's no updates, it leaves systems vulnerable. They can still work and some of these things will still work, it's just to think about some mission critical items and, and needs. So, of course, you know, over the years, I've been at this gig for 29 years and over the years, like cybersecurity just plays into everything. We wanna make sure we're protecting our systems, making sure we're protecting our data and keeping our systems updated. So if you ever wonder what keeps a tech director up late at night, that's it. And it's post-COVID really, once people really started getting online, that's where challenges came ahead, as well as artificial intelligence. So the actors, they call them bad actors, are becoming more, I guess, smart utilizing AI. So we actually implement tools that use AI to combat these bad people who use AI. So, but this is definitely something that I'm constantly thinking about, wanting to protect our system, our data, so on and so forth. So a little bit about safety and security. The number one, one of the, one of the big, I would say expenditures coming very soon is our phone system. And it's not just our phones, but the actual system itself. This will be end of support in 2025. So that means there will be no more patches, no more updates, you know, and it leaves us vulnerable because in the event of something happening, we'd have to scramble to find hardware support for them. We do have a vendor that can still provide support, but as things go on, it's, it's just a risky kind of situation. The system we have right now is called Mitel and it only works with phones that match the system. So if we change the system, we have to change the phones. There are some cloud-based technologies that I think are very attractive, they're easier to manage, they open the doors to new possibilities that we're not utilizing right now. When we initially received some pricing from a vendor, some of those cloud-based systems were like $10,000 a month, but after doing some investigation, we can actually replace everything, including phones, for about 80,000 to 100,000, but we would be on the cusp for an additional $5,000 per year for maintenance. So there are some more attractive items. The other thing is security cameras. So our security camera system is made up of cameras and servers. Right now, on each, at each school, we have a server that basically networks all of the cameras. Well, we have two servers right now that are looking at end of life. And so some of the considerations are, do we replace these servers for probably more cost than potentially centralizing all of our servers, which again, is something to consider district-wide for management, efficiency and improved oversight. The only downside of any of these centralized things is in the event of internet being down, network being down, fiber cut that we had last July, you know, that would cause some problems. Ballpark cost for servers around 25, estimated, just the servers would be about 25,000. And then we have 28 cameras in our primary school that were installed at the onset of bringing that building online back in 2006, so they are 10 years old. So we estimate those around 40,000 to 50,000 dollars. Now I'm gonna get into networking connectivity. So one of our, one of our main controllers for our Wi-Fi in the district is we have a couple of wireless LAN controllers. And basically, it's a centralized system that manages all of the other systems and as you have patches or updates, you can push those out through that system versus manually trying to update one of the 250 access points we have in the district. So we initially did some pricing this, earlier this fall, and I was pretty shocked at the, at what the pricing came back. Just for the network LAN controllers was about 111,000 dollars. And then went back to the drawing board and said, okay, that seems super high to me. And, you know, it's also somewhat archaic technology, it's on premise, you know, and the other thing is, is that's just 111 just for the wireless LAN controller when we have access points that are also starting to go end of life. So option one was just getting pricing on that. So option two was, well, what if, what if we replaced all access points district-wide with next-generation cloud-managed APs? Basically, it takes the wireless LAN controller out and we essentially, it's all cloud-based. We actually dabbled in this, we have some of these devices on premise in the district because when we built or went into our, the, the building referendums, at the time, because of COVID, we couldn't get certain access points, just because they weren't in stock. So we got these cloud-based systems here at the district office, as well as the athletic facility, and we found out we really liked them. They're, you know, very easy to use, they're cloud-based, you know, and, and so what would happen, what would happen if we said, instead of the wireless LAN controllers, what if, what would it look like if we replaced all of our access points? And ballpark was the entire fleet, we could get the access points for 140,000. That's $30,000 more than just the wireless LAN controller, so hence why, you know, and that's, that's what we have left to do. By the way, we are also looking at the next generation of wireless, which will take us at least seven years, so it's also thinking about the longevity. I can go ahead and I can get access points, the 6E access points, which is less bandwidth, but you know, they're, you're gonna have a shorter window and when, before they go end of life. So the other item for network connectivity is our network switches. Technology like access points, phones, cameras are all powered with our network switches. They're actually called power over Ethernet. As the, as we introduce the next generation of these technologies, the existing network switches that we have in our wiring closets don't have enough power to, to power those devices. So we need to think about, you know, improving our speed, reliability, and then future scaling. A ballpark cost for switches would be around 100,000 dollars, 18. And again, this is all just ballpark, there's also some challenges with pricing too. I just wanna share, so the nice thing about network connectivity is we qualify for E-Rate funding, and this is federal funding that provides discounts or reimbursements to schools. And you can get reimbursement for internet access, which we do, as well as, it's called category two and it's all about communications. So networking services, switches, APs, we've actually done a couple of wiring projects that we qualify for. And each school is allotted certain pot and allowed to spend that over some time. And funding is applied to, funding is applied for annually, so every, that's some of the quotes that I, that I gave you around access points and wireless LAN controller. I actually threw it into this year's annual bidding process just to see what came back, to see if we could potentially afford it. The way it works is it's a match. So if, for instance, network switches cost 100,000 dollars, we would get back 50,000 dollars from E-Rate. Access points are 140,000 dollars, we would get a discount of 70,000, so the total cost, we'd get a reimbursement for 70,000. So we really wanna make sure we take, you know, take advantage of those funding sources. You know, there are some caveats, you know, it's federal funding, so we wanna watch and make sure, you know, funding continues, but in this I've given you, this is like the, the big price, but we also can potentially get E-Rate services for that. The last item is classroom technology. So our primary interactive classroom TVs are nearing 10 years of age, again, and thinking about when the building came online in 2016, they will be 10 years old in 2026. We just need to think about a replacement plan for them, you know, as it could potentially happen where you might have one or two fail, or you could have 10 fail. And just those being such a critical part of the classroom, you know, especially with our youngest learners, we have to think about a replacement plan. Here's another ballpark cost of 125,000 dollars. So I have in this presentation, like here are all of the different prices. I did include the wireless LAN controller, but I think, you know, a safer, future-ready route would be going, looking at wireless access points. And depending on E-Rate, you know, I'm looking at a 445,000 to 565,000 dollars in the next few years. There are some renewable costs, you know, like the added yearly for the phone systems and then wireless access points would also need a license renewal every five years, but that is also eratable, so. So considerations. So a lot of times what we've done in big purchases is we lease them. We currently lease our Chromebooks, our iPads, we have, are leasing a TV project where we replaced all of the projectors in our high school and middle school classrooms. We're, we're also leasing our staff, our staff laptops. So leasing is an option, so instead of, you know, looking at 450 to 550, you can take things, divide it, and get a little bit of interest added to that. The other consideration is cost of hardware can fluctuate. We've seen this in COVID, there's a lot of unknowns with potential of tariffs, so you know, this is the best guess kind of, you know, right now. You know, if in the event we actually went through something, you know, the courts would of course be more official. I mentioned about E-Rates, you know, the questions are, you know, is those federal funds gonna be available? I hear that there's positive talk about that, but you know, it's just a, it's just a potential. And the biggest question is, should IT be included on the ballot? I know, you know, we're talking about an operating levy come November and any considerations for adding some of these capital projects to the ballot, whether it be included in the operating question or, you know, specific tech question. And that's not to decide today, I'll be visiting, visiting our budget committees, I'll be visiting our facilities committees, but I just wanted to be aware of, like, here are some big projects coming up that, you know, are pretty significant that we need to think about. So, do I have any questions?
Do you know how long it takes to get the E-Rate reimbursement?
So, yeah, usually the way it works is right now we had some projects go forward and we're looking at usually the following year, so July of 2025 is what we'll get for the 24, 25 year. So they're a little bit behind, yeah.
So what are the investments we're gonna be making? What will be the term of those investments? Is it like 10 next, like, are those technologies gonna be useful or usable for the next 10 years, or is it all different based on?
Yeah, and that, I did, I kind of went through that quickly, so I kind of have on that, oh, this one, shoot. I have, you know, like, phone systems are 10 to 12, cameras 5 to 7. And, and here's the deal, like, even our, you know, right now we're at a 10-year for our cameras in the primary school. Like, we can push, you know, some of these are overflow, right? You can push them further depending, now in our, you know, middle school and high school, cameras play, you know, a different role, so. But we, we just gotta be careful when you go beyond that kind of threshold. So we make decisions like that all the time, you know, but it's kind of sharing the whole, the whole idea. That's your, that's where we're at, is, you know.
The difference between the LAN wireless and the cloud-based, is there any difference in security?
No, there, there really isn't. You know, I would say, like I said, the, the cloud-based is just a more modern system, it gets things off premise, you know, but the, the challenge is, is when you go to the cloud, then you're dependent on internet. I would say we're, you know, our internet's pretty good, if anything, it's the power outages that we've had in the past, but you know, I really don't see a significant problem with that. And security-wise, they're actually, they're the same, you know, vendor, it's just like, why would people invest in that? I have no idea.
I might need that.
Thank you. There's your techie, techie presentation. Any other questions?
I just wanna say thanks to Jen, cuz she puts in a lot of time, she does have a lot of sleepless nights, cuz she'll text me in the morning saying, what do you think about this, and hey, we gotta know this, and she sits at her admin meetings and kind of lets us, reminds us about things like phones and those sort of things, that it is, as you can see, a big price tag, but as you said, there are some ways that you can, you know, leasing or, or put into the operating referendum and try to figure in that. The other thing to look at is, I know that for capital improvements levy, it's, it's done differently for taxpayers and it's for, for the operating, so you kind of have to balance those, and you do have one question, two questions, well, they're all things I think need to come out in the next couple of months as, as you start looking at that referendum in the fall, and then, you know, how do you space it out over the, these next few years when those have to be replaced and, and the cost, right? So, but thanks Jen for all the work in keeping us online, I appreciate it. You can probably leave it right there and probably get, cuz food service will be next and Malia will come in and get us set up.
Thanks Jen. Thank you.
Come on Debbie. So we have Malia Schroder here, and Debbie Frank, Debbie is the Tahoe, she's our lead person that runs all of our cooks and all of our food service, and so they are here to talk about, to give updates on food service at the high school, so.
Hi, I'm. Good evening. I'll get my presentation over here. There we go, all right. I'm Malia Schroder and I'm the high school principal.
Debbie Frank, the district's food service manager.
Okay. We were asked to come here and share some information related to how the high school operates, the food service program, because we are not on the national school lunch program. The other buildings are, but we are not. So we, we've been asked to just give some background, some info as to why the decision was made and how it's been going. So I put together some historical slides with Debbie's help, she gave me some info, and you can see here that Tahoe's been with Byron for 17 years. They did run a survey, the survey though does include sixth, seventh, and eighth grade kids, but we tried to just give you some data later on here in some of the slides. The reason that we made the switch to go off of the national school lunch program was because our kids reported to us at the high school that they were hungry, that the food that comes in the national school lunch program isn't enough food to keep them full. So that was one of the main reasons we pulled out of that, which was about seven or eight years ago. There was also a large amount of waste that was noticed as the foods that were provided from the federal program was not foods that our kids were eating and a lot of it was being thrown away. So that's what got us off of the program and now to where we are today. Here, this slide talks a little bit about the same meal that 180-pound boy receives is the same calories a day for a 100-pound girl. And if you've been in our high school, I have some 230, 40-pound boys who look like young men, and that's not enough food to keep them full throughout the day. So our kids definitely get a great option for food to eat during the day, and we provided some pictures here for you to take a look at as we, as we get into this a little further, so you can take a look at what they have for options to eat. What Tahoe does bring to our school is we have a chef on site and he provides what's called our chef line, the furthest line there, and then it's the most expensive meal, but it's a homemade meal that he's created for them, a lot of times based off of what the students are interested in eating. Like we said, he takes a lot of input. We have a, a fax class, family consumer science course, Ryan Radke teaches that, he, Tahoe, Debbie's crew and Ryan's class, they partner quite a bit, learning how to work with food, serving food, finding food that customers would like to eat, so there's been a great partnership with that, and they've been with us through the long haul. Some of the data that we pulled out of that survey is that 75% of the students eat school lunch three, three to five days out of the week. And then 73.8% of those kids are also very satisfied with school lunch, their top choices of meals provided, which is probably no big shocker to any of you, are the, the meals up there. Here's the one piece though that I don't know if that's on anyone's radar. We have a food truck, it's called the Byron Bistro. Our food truck cannot operate and sell food to our student body if we go back on the national school lunch program. So if that's what the board decides to do, we can, we can cook the food in the bistro, we have to go off of property and we can't sell to our student body during school hours. The dilemma with that is that that would be a major, and it's in shouty capital letters, because our student body would be significantly disappointed in the fact that they can't purchase the food that their peers are, are, all of the kid, all of the meals provided by the Byron Bistro were developed by our student body. They made those recipes themselves and have developed them over the years and then sell them to our community, they sell them at our homecoming event, which I'm sure many of you have experienced before, but they also sell them during the school day in conjunction with working with Debbie, so that Debbie is aware of when are we selling, so, and we have a large group of kids that'll go up there and purchase the food that their peers make. So it is one thing I would really like you to consider thinking about, if there is a decision that needs to be made related to whether or not we stay on it or we go off of it. A major part of the revenue for the Byron Three Town Bistro is selling to our student body. So they are a sustainable food truck program based on the revenue that they bring in, and so right now, that would be a major hit to our food truck program. So we do have some students on educational benefits, which was the old term free and reduced lunch. Right now, how that process works is those students can walk into our cafeteria and they can have any choice they want. They can pick from a burger basket, pizza, grab-and-go items. If they choose to have the chef meal, that's just gonna cost them $1 total. So in a sense, Debbie put it in a nice way, it's as if they walk in already with $4.85 in their hand because they can go grab those things. If they want the option that's being provided by the chef, they just pay an out-of-pocket $1 to get that, and all of those things come with a beverage, also water or milk. Right now, Tahoe is currently covering the cost of the educational benefits, which I believe Dan could correct me, but I'm thinking it's around 12,000 to 13,000 estimated maybe per year for a high school cost of free and reduced lunch cost.
Yeah, somewhere around there, we, probably using more, the higher number, but.
Okay. Oh, then I'm, I'm saying corrected, thank you, I appreciate that. So in talking with Debbie, the number, or the, that Tahoe is currently covering the cost of the students who are, who are on educational benefits at the high school, which would be something you would need to consider. So here's, here are the comparisons, right? Here are the meal with the beverage, the 45 meal, those are our kind of our grab-and-go items, there's salads, there's subs with chips in there, there's wraps with chip, bags of chips in there, there's single sandwiches, there's fruit cups, there's hard-boiled eggs, there's yogurt, there's fresh fruit cut up with dips, and then the other option here would be what basically the middle school and those, the other buildings get, which is the USDA free meal. Here again are some of the other basket meals that we offer, there's, there are some that are $4.10 and some that are $4.85. You can see, and on a regular basis, we do offer slices of pizza and basket meals on a, on an everyday, along with those grab-and-go cold items, salads, options for kids. This is one of our chef meals that Chef Jay provided, it's, you get two soft-shell tacos, rice, and then beans are also underneath there, your two condiments, and then you have your, your beverage, the water, the milk, and then we also have that next to what would be a free meal if we were to switch over. Here are a few others of his highly popular meals available for our high school students. As you can see, the, the amount is significantly different and they definitely are full. Now, do, we still do have kids that will bring their own cold lunch and eat a chef meal. I mean, we have some big eaters. In the end, if you're asking what, what I would, what my recommendation would be is that we don't switch from the national school lunch program. I think we need to feed the kids and give them the foods that they wanna eat, it reduces the waste, less of, less kids are hungry. I have provided three industrial microwaves and a toaster available for all of them who do bring. I have provided three industrial microwaves and a toaster available for all of them who do bring their own meals from home to warm up. I would have more, but we don't have any other circuits available to plug them into and it draws a lot of power. So we have three. And then we also have, you know, like water, if they maybe do like a little mac and cheese cup, they fill it up with water and then they'll microwave that, or like a noodles cup, they'll do that. So we have lots of those options in that entire cafeteria area. Our food truck program is a massive success. We are one of the only food trucks in the state of Minnesota. And it's been, it's been just an awesome class for our kids to take. That would be sad to see them not be able to service their own student body during the school day. And like Debbie said, you're always welcome to come up.
On me, anytime.
And eat lunch or could just come and see what it's like in our cafeteria. We serve about seven hundred kids come through there in three shifts. And we're happy to show you kind of what it looks like if you have more questions or you're just a little more curious or want to know a little bit more. Otherwise, any other questions for me?
I know that the food truck is just amazing and we're all very proud of the food truck. You mentioned the revenue that it brings in a lot of revenue. What kind of things does that support?
It supports the food truck program. So all the other groceries are gonna, they're purchasing, you have any new equipment they might need. But it just tries to keep that program self-sustaining so we don't have to keep putting in curriculum, new curriculum money into that course. It keeps the course self-sustainable.
Thank you.
Is there anything that you can put out to like the high school parents and middle school parents to let them know about all of this? Because feedback that we've been receiving is, well, we didn't vote on it. I didn't vote on it. And, cause it's been, it hasn't been done for a while?
So maybe, so the survey was the kids taking the survey. So you're right, they haven't, they haven't taken a survey. We didn't give a survey on it. It was actually Tawer's survey that they did with their students to ask them about lots of things like service, you know.
Friendly.
Friendly, yep, clientele, all that. So are you asking me to put out like communication about what it is or you want them to have a say?
I think communication first to just say, you know, everything that you said about the food truck and how valuable that is to our school.
Correct.
And what else have we put in there?
I think we could, another thing we could do instead of, just so you don't have to do it, is put it in our, like the board could write a blurb in the Byron Buzz and just say that we talked about, we could just link her, Malia's presentation maybe.
Yeah, actually that would be the idea to link the. Just so parents can know that, you know, we're talking about this, but the kids really, the kids and parents seven or eight years ago really wanted this option.
Yeah, most definitely. And I would say although you, I understand their, their voice isn't heard as parents right now, but I would tell them if they came and watched those kids eat, they're full. You know, they're, they are, they are fed well, they have lots of options whether, do they have dessert options? Yes, they do. They have dessert options. But, you know, they're, they're gonna be adults here soon, so make a choice. If you, if you feel the need to eat that piece of cake, okay, maybe don't do it every day. Right? And if you wanna eat the chef meal and, and there is, you know, maybe mom and dad say only two chef meals a week. That's what we're willing to pay for. And then the other times, you know. I've had two daughters now through the program and we talk about, okay, you're not going through the all the cart line every day to buy your lunch out of that. You can bring some things from home and then go supplement it with other things. So we talk about that too as, at our house also, so. But it, the option for them to have a chef who listens to them and then all of a sudden they have boneless buffalo wings that are buffalo sauce, honey barbecue sauce, celery, carrots, french fries that are baked and their beverage of choice with any, with the dipping sauces on the side. They're pretty happy because they know they can't go to Buffalo Wild Wings and get that for five dollars. So, so they're pretty excited and it's, and it's a lot of good, it's good food for them and, and I think that that keeps them satisfied during the day.
But less waste then?
There's definitely less waste according to the other principals who watch the other meals from the trays be tossed.
Speaking of waste, do, do we have any kind of second harvest? Is it, do they, is there, or can, do you have to throw away food at the end of the day?
We don't necessarily have to throw away food, but I haven't seen like, you know, I will say like not a milk carton that isn't unopened isn't being tossed. I don't see things like that. And a lot of times if someone bought an apple, we'll see that. And if they don't, and our apples are sliced up and then they, they can get it with a little yogurt cup to dip it into. If they don't finish it, they're usually passing it to somebody else and somebody's finishing it for them. There isn't a lot of uneaten food unless it's been touched. Does that make sense? Yeah, I'm gonna maybe share that, let's hope. They're not so alert.
I just wanna say it's, it's nice to hear you put your mom hat on too, because you are putting it. I'm not hearing from the parents as much as others, but when I had a number of students work with me and for me, their comment was when you have the educational benefits and it's that specific line, it creates an unfair stigma to the kids that are using that line because they were saying that it was very obvious. And it might not be at the high school, it's other schools. But they're saying that there is an unfair stigma associated with those kids and that's not how we wanna represent ourselves. But they're also saying the chef's meal is like going to their favorite restaurant.
Sure.
And it is well worth every bit of it. And I had a couple of those big eaters. And they mentioned like, I, if I don't get full, I just get something off the all of carts. And I'm aware it's, it's not overly expensive, but it's not free. But at the same time, like you just said, I'm not getting that meal at Buffalo Wild Wings for five dollars. So you have to put, I think, constraints, and I would do this with my kids of, okay, look. Here's your budget for the week. How you wanna spend it, it's up to you. But just my compliments because the compliments I've heard from the kids are glowing.
Thank you so much.
To address the stigma piece, we used to, a couple of years ago, have a line that when you came in on the right-hand side where kids with educational benefits would get a tray and get kind of the basic choice for the day. We took that away because of the stigma and that we don't have that anymore. Now basically the kid walks in with like how I said, the four eighty-five in their hand and they can go get what everyone else is getting. So there is, no one can see or tell what that looks like.
Which is amazing.
Yeah, so we made that change, but yes, and that's a good point for that reason, to get away from the stigma behind it.
Thank you for the presentation. I'm really hungry.
Come to the high school tomorrow.
So like may I summarize something? I just like wasn't maybe kind of unclear for me. So the meals that we are offering right now to the kids in the high school wouldn't have been for the same price for them if it wasn't the government program, right?
No.
But, but like except for the chef's meal, right? That's additional.
There would be no chef's meal.
There would be no chef's.
Right, right. There will be no chef's.
Everything would be whole grain, only two ounces of protein allowed a day. One grain a day and the major focus is the fruit and vegetables. So that's the problem we had where the kids just throwing away the fruits and vegetables. And they are hungry. I hear a lot, seventh and eighth graders, they're hungry because they're not, you know, throwing their fruits and vegetables because it's not keeping them going all day, especially in sports and stuff.
So, but pretty much like our kids are paying for those better meals, right?
Yes ma'am.
Okay. And yes, right, five dollars for those meals is really.
Yeah, buy a McDonald's biscuit.
And then, so was it like the, the free and reduced lunch, for the whole year is twenty thousand, meaning that's equivalent of what we would have paid or what?
Would have been free, what you would not have had to pay, correct.
And we, we effectively are getting the same benefit from Tawer, right? For those kids?
Yes.
Okay.
Yes.
So pretty much it should be the choice of our high schoolers or their parents, not high schoolers, right? Their parents to decide whether they want to allow their kids to pay more and have the meals versus go back to the government program, right?
Yes.
Okay, you clarify.
I would say though that the, if at some day the Tawer decides not to pay the twenty thousand, the board will have to make a decision. Is that something that you feel you can afford so that you can stay off of the National School Lunch Program? That would be something you'd have to consider.
And what's the, like the National School Lunch for high schoolers? How much would that cost?
Oh, what would the cost of that lunch be?
Oh, it's been so long.
I think it's around, reversible meals like three eighty-five, three ninety something.
So we're doing four dollars to five dollars.
And Malia, you feel confident if we went back to the NSLP that the, the bistro goes away? Because there's just.
I don't think it would go away.
It would be tough.
I, I think it would be, I think, I jokingly, no, we're not gonna say that in public. I think you'd have a loud voice from the student body stating that they want it back, the option. And the only way to do that would be to stay off the National School Lunch Program.
And how many kids benefit from that truck program? How many kids go through that?
Go through the line to buy the food or in the course?
In the court, like get educational piece from that.
Yep, I would say.
And they're not getting paid, right?
No, no, they don't get paid. Nope, it's just the course they take. Um, anywhere from twenty-four to thirty kids will take the course and we run the course approximately twice a year. But that course is in collaboration with a business course. So that we have the business side of running a, like a little food truck. And there's another twenty-four to thirty. So I only run two sections of each. So we got four sections, you know, you can get any. It, it fluctuates a little bit, but that'd be about it.
You guys go straight from like farm to table, right?
Yep, all of that food is either grown in our greenhouse that they use. They do have to supplement some of it from, some of the ingredients from like Hy-Vee, but we get a lot of donations. We work with the company in Rochester for all the cheeses used and dairy products. And then we source all the beef from local farmers, pork from local farmers, yep.
So it's sixty kids per year out of seven hundred?
On the, on the food truck side, on the business side, it's a little less than that. Yep. Welcome.
Is there anything that the board can do to help this narrative?
Um, it sounds like maybe more communication will be helpful and maybe whether it's putting this in the buzz or if you decide that maybe you need a summary of that, just let me know and I can work on something. And I'll, we can run it together and we'll come up with something. Maybe just more communication.
Especially for the freshmen, new freshmen.
Yeah.
Coming in, yeah, parents.
Yeah.
Well, I think right now, last year and this year, remember it was free, it would be free for everybody. So even the ones that are not on educational benefits, they would be free. And I think what you're hearing sometimes is people saying, well, I'm paying sometimes for one or two kids. I could be paying a thousand dollars a year for lunches when it could be free. But they don't realize that when you go to free, you have other, there are kids who have other options that they probably don't want. The other part is they, you know, I, I've been told at the middle school, they kind of work the system because you have to pay sixty cents or whatever it is for a milk. But if you go get a lunch, you get a free milk with it. So they'll go up and get the lunch and then they'll grab the milk and then they'll see if anybody wants anything on that. If they don't want it, they dump the tray because they just got a free, because they didn't wanna have to go pay sixty cents for the milk. So I think there's different things that people do and maybe it is communication, but right now and, you know, at the legislature, they're talking about not having totally free lunches. It depends on raising the bar to who would still have to pay and so forth. But that's being discussed now. So it may not be totally free in the future. But right now, if we weren't on, if we weren't separate, everyone would be getting the free lunch. So that's where people are asking, I would like a free lunch or I would not have to spend a thousand dollars. But then if you ask the kids, it's, it's well worth it every day for a hundred and seventy-two school days or whatever it is, so.
Yeah, I certainly understand why people are asking. And I mean, when you look at these meals, it's not even a comparison. Yeah, the food, the quality and the, it's, it's just looks like night and day. So, yeah, I think it's.
Come join us one day.
Yeah, well, I have to thank you personally because I know my mom has emailed me for recipes that my kids have asked.
Oh my goodness!
So thank you.
Aw, thank you, thank you.
Yeah, this thing is probably good for our kids.
Thank you so much.
It's really helpful to see the whole picture and understand. Good, wonderful. Anything else for me?
Thank you Malia.
Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you very much.
Okay, I'm gonna head to escape and then Dan can go to the agenda and then he can pull up the next one. He's on the web next.
Yes, that they've been holding their warmers since noon.
Not so much that one.
Well, good evening, Chair Eard, Member of the School Board, President, you're back. Yeah, it's tough. You follow technology. They are so smart and then you get the fun stuff and then you got finance. Not a lot that can do this exciting with this stuff. As we're all educators, tonight's session is really just more about some education as we look into putting together next year's budget, as we're working on it. And as, as you see the numbers, meaning you'll understand a little bit more of how Minnesota, Minnesota school finance works. So Minnesota, Minnesota school finance, every state does it a little differently. UFARs is the main driver of how we account for all our expenses and our revenues. They're all tracked using UFARs. Now UFARs is an acronym. You're always supposed to say the acronym before you say the acronym. That stands for Uniform Financial Accounting Reporting Standards. And every year, I lead with the principals in, in bigger meetings and give them a quiz on acronyms and we usually got this one wrong. But remember that one, it's standards, not systems. The reason we use UFAR is it ensures that all school districts use the same system. Now, when I was working in county government and doing finance, we must've had, you know, ten different systems people were using. You couldn't even really compare statewide what was going on. This way you can look up on the M D U website and look at how every district spends their money and in a very similar fashion the way you do. You can use percentages. There's many great reports. And the reason they can produce those reports is because we all use the same account codes for the same type of expenses. There's only about five software systems in the state that are approved to use, to run UFARs. The software systems have to be approved before a district can use them. Districts carefully choose among the list based on what's available. Sometimes a new company will come in, but if they can't get enough interest, it's not even worth them to apply. We use what's called smart, smart systems. And it's very, very well supported throughout the state. They have five different regions. We're in region five. And I can't say enough good things about the staff there and the way they support us. And anytime we have an issue with something not going right, we just give a call and they help us out right away. So the UFARs code consists of seventeen digits. The first two stand for the fund. Government accounting is called fund accounting, not fun, fund. The next three digits describe the org, organization or the site where it's happening. The next three digits describe the program, which is what type of expense are you doing this for? The next three digits is a course code. That's optional. That's just used locally only. So if we need to break out the food truck from other expenses in curriculum, we use a different course code. So that way we can sort that a lot easier. But that's not required by state. And then the, the next three digits are the finance codes and those are probably the most important ones because that tells us whether these funds are restricted. You hear about unfunded mandates, things like that. That's how they track that stuff. We have to receive our revenue in a certain finance code and spend it in the same finance code. And then the last three digits are, are the object on the expense side, meaning what's it spent on, what type of expenditure it is. And, or the source on the revenue side, where the money is coming from. So I talked about funds and every school district has these basic type funds, the same ones. We have a general fund. That's basically where all your instructional operations go through, your, your maintenance operations, your administration. There's a food service fund that we just heard about. Everything that happens in the food service fund stays in the food service fund. The food service fund, can I give money to the general fund? Uh, the food service fund, can I give money to the general fund? But the general fund sometimes has to give money to the food service fund if it goes broke. Community services fund, the same thing, it's very restrictive, community ed and other community services. And once again, the general fund can give money there, but the community service cannot give money to the general fund. Construction fund is there for when we have construction projects, it's an ad hoc fund. Debt service fund is one that we run all the payments we need to make to service our debt. When you sell a bond for forty million dollars and you have payments to make, the money collected comes from levies that goes into the debt service fund. And then when we pay those bills, we take it out of the debt service fund. The internal service fund is, that's an ad hoc one too, in which it's used in case, um, we run, run something internally. Like we have, Byron has a self-insured dental program, so we run our self-insurance of the dental program through the internal service fund. We have two other funds that we use that are subsidiaries of the general fund, so they're really general funds. But we break it out, we have a couple of trust funds, one is for scholarships and one is for student activities. The org, the, the site, it's pretty, pretty basic, it's pretty self-explanatory in this district. It's, we bring things in the district wide, expenses that would go across the whole district. Uh, then we have the primary school, the intermediate school, the middle school and the high school. Programs, we've talked about this before, we break it into different ways of spending our money. We have district support in which they're supporting the schools. There's administration of the schools. Uh, we have instructional, which is the main part where you spend most of your money. That's both regular vocational and special education. We have activities, we have pupil support, which is like transportation and counseling and nursing. And then we have facilities, which is self-explanatory. We, we can pull up just the facility costs for the whole district and break it down by sites too. Now, the finance code, that's used for restricted funds. Um, there's many, many different finance codes and they usually tell us when a new program comes into play. So you're gonna have to use this finance code to track this. All the revenues and expenses must be reported with that finance code. An example would be operating capital. A certain amount of aid comes in for operating capital that can, that's can only be spent on capital things. And, um, we have to run all the revenue through there and all the expenses so that we can show that we did that. And they can find out more easily if we did do that. The thing about restricted accounts in the finance codes, the unused funds must be carried over. Generally, if you're in an unassigned account, if it's just general, general fund, that money doesn't carry over. We just start anew. But if we have money left over in LTFM, um, that stays in a restricted account and can be used the next year too. And then the objects or, and or the source, the source is different revenues, but, um, basically the objects. Uh, we talked about this before too, and salaries are the big one, the benefits is broken out. Services, supplies, equipment, and then just anything else that we spend our money on. Mostly financing purposes for other. So when we look at revenues, we kind of look at what's unrestricted. That's basically most of your general aid and there's no finance code to that. So there's no strains attached to anything that goes into unrestricted. And that's where most of our money comes through is unrestricted. Now, the restricted ones are the ones we gotta watch and that's the ones where we say, well, they gave us all this historic money, but they said we had to spend X amount right here, right here only. Uh, we had to spend this amount right here, right here only. Those are your restricted codes. Examples, there's many, many examples, but ones that are easy to remember, like safe schools. Safe schools, we, you levy ninety to a hundred thousand dollars a year for safe schools. They can only be used for safety reasons and, um, more, I shouldn't even say safety, it's more security reasons. It can also be used for like counseling services, mental health. But, uh, when you're paying for like an S R O and things like that, generally that money comes out of safe schools. Special education, that's, that's got a finance code, but we spend much more on special education. Remember you see the revenue, so there's never any carryover. Staff development, a certain amount of money has to be set aside for staff development. And if it doesn't get spent, it gets carried over. There's, there's many, many different ones, but when you, when I talk about restricted codes, those are things that have to be carried over if there's money left over and the money has to be spent as the statute says. It's the same with the expenditures, no finance code, unrestricted. You can spend any way you want, but it has to be, of course, by law, I mean, by things that are against the law. But, um, generally, just all your expenses that you'd see deemed fit to serve the students of our district. Um, and then of course, restricted ones, I just kind of talked about that, had to be spent the way the statute says. Just an update on what's going on in the finance department. We're getting our bank reconciliations caught up and that's kind of exciting for bean counters, but not for anybody else. But it's good to know. Yeah, it's going very well, we're getting some help from region five on that too as, you know, it's a lot different than just balancing your checkbook at home. You can't just stick it into Quik and it will balance for you. It takes a lot of different revenues going in and out of different bank accounts. But so far, we're up through December, we should have everything done by the next board meeting so we can post them all in the, in the agenda for you and everything balanced out. Everyone had any issues or anything right now? We've been posting the regular expenditure, uh, report in the consent agenda now. And if you look last week, the last time we posted it, it was pretty much right on track. Overall expenditures to date, you know, would be at this point about fifty-six percent. And we spent about fifty-three and a half percent, so we're, we're ahead on expenditures. And revenues, I don't see any problems there, revenues are pretty easy to predict. Once, if you like, X factor on revenues is enrollment. We didn't get too, too risky on the enrollment this time. So you gotta kind of always watch that, don't, don't budget too many kids coming in because that's the only thing that's gonna really throw your revenues off. Budget work, we're just, we're just working on it. It's kind of just going department by department, line by line, it just takes a little while. The, the plan is, you know, my goal is to have something ready, you know, by April twenty-first so we can talk a little bit about it, but not that the budget, you know, the idea is to present the budget, um, first part of June. But what, it's going okay, it's, it just takes a long time. And, um, kind of waiting on the legislature, I don't see a lot of financial things happening with this, this time around. That's really gonna make or break us some of us. A couple of things that, you know, could be troublesome if they run out of unemployment money and you're, if they don't like to levy for summertime unemployment, that would, that could cost you thirty thousand or so. And then also, um, if they have to charge a payroll tax for earnings that can save time, that would. What did you figure, Mike, what did you figure the cost of eighty thousand?
If, if we paid for half without paying family leave, um, about the point eight-eight percent, it'd be around sixty-seven thousand dollars. If you have to pay the whole thing, depending on how things work. Right now, we, we would just have to pay half, but like the negotiating thing, you can double that if you end up having to pay the whole thing, right? So.
Yeah, that's fine, then the budget committee meets, uh, the next budget committee meeting is April twenty-first and we started working with some new, um, projection models and we should be able to have some good discussions about, the amount you would, you know, wanna ask for in a referendum next fall. And what, and whether or not you, Jen mentioned a little bit about, you know, capital projects, things like that.
And just, um, you know, we put out to our staff that most of the spending for the twenty-four, twenty-five school year should be done by April fifteenth. Uh, so that way, um, the biggest reason is because we don't want somebody ordering something late and it comes after June thirtieth and then you have to pay for it on next year's budget when you think it's coming out this year's budget, so we want to make sure things. And also is able to give us an idea at the very end, to slow things down a little bit and so that you can really see where, where you're ending your, you know, according to your budgets. So, um, you, you might see that in some of those reports as you look each month. And we're, and Dan's giving those reports and so forth. But thanks, Dan, for doing that. We always, again, school finance is hard with all those codes. And now as you look at those reports and as we develop more reports moving forward, you'll be able to understand and, uh, and maybe you might wanna change careers and go into school finance, so.
Dan, I don't have any questions, I'm just really grateful you're taking the time to give us these basically little seminars. Everyone's really, really appreciate it.
Thanks, Dan. Move on to our district operational plan, which, um, as a board, we focused on priorities and seeing what that looks like. This is based on all of our feedback, but we have not had a chance yet as a board to discuss and edit. So, uh, we can start with board priority number one, financial stability. Are there any questions or discussion or potential edits that we want to make to, uh, this block of priority?
Alicia, just wanna check, is this the one that you sent? You know, I think it was, but I just wanna make sure it got in there.
I don't think it is.
No?
It doesn't have.
Maybe it's the wrong thing that I ended up packing in here, I just wanted to make sure.
Yeah, there's a note somewhere, but it wasn't.
Um, one question that I had just generally, have we talked to our building administrators or included them in? Or are, are we just doing this, this on our own?
This is on our own and then they derive their set of goals from this.
Okay. I feel like we should, I feel like we're working in silos and I don't like that. I feel like we should, I love that Nate talked about a very collaborative approach multiple times and I don't know exactly what that looks like, but I feel like for this, um, we should consider a more collaborative approach. I don't, I'm not smart enough to know what that looks like, but.
If you don't mind, what I maybe do is, um, maybe we could tailor this to the next meeting or bring it to the next meeting. I will make sure the right one gets in there and I apologize for not getting the right one in. Because Alicia did send some, um, changes and so forth and that's what we were gonna talk about tonight. Um, I will answer that, that question though, Alicia's that.
Yeah.
These are what the board from the twenty-thousand foot level wants to see as a vision and as where the district should, as you wanna focus on at that level. And then when you look at things like the, um, staff and mental health and, or staff and assuming mental health profile of graduate, now what's happening is in our buildings, they're coming up with their goals for next year. They've been working on some things and so forth, but they're going to try to keep those in mind. So when they talk about, um, mental health as part of their district operation plan, they're gonna fi- figure out a way to deal with student mental health in there. Because that's your kind of focus. You wouldn't wanna be, uh, my suggestions, you wouldn't wanna be so in line and so on staff that they would have to follow to the T because they have their curricular work and they have their other type of work that they're doing. But in the same time, they know that this is a, uh, an emphasis for the board and for the district moving forward. So as they meet in their site teams and so forth, what are they doing to, to support that? But it's not gonna be everything, right?
I just, I do understand that piece. I think this is my just larger concern. I'm not an education expert, I think what we came up with are, is great, but I would just love their opinion. Like, do they think we're missing the mark on anything? Um, do they think we should bring a number of the priorities? Is there something that they don't think should be a priority? I guess I would maybe appreciate just their general feedback if they think we're on the right track or if there's something they would like to see added.
And also, is that, was that an annual exercise or do we?
It's annual.
Annual, okay.
About this time of year, we do the same thing. We ask the board for theirs and then we have them work on, on the, the school-wide ones.
And when was this all updated?
Uh, well, this would've been from last year, but what happened is, and then I put it out there. I, I changed some of this, Jeremy and I went through it and then I changed it, um, for this coming year. Compared to, because we didn't have this, remember last year, we had specific goals by this time, by this time, by this time. And it became almost too, I would just say managerial, where it felt like you guys had goals and it wasn't at the twenty-thousand foot level. So when we talked to the administrators, that's what they wanted, to make sure, you know, they want to see the bigger umbrella and then let them do the work on the ground level to, to be able to make that happen. You know, I will tell you, we, we have gone through this. There wasn't anything that they, um, again, that they said shouldn't be there because they're all working on that. Again, I think their concern, um, as is, I think in many, in many districts is that the board then feels like they have to, you know, be at the managerial level or be at that ground level and not let the administrators do their work. They wanna know what you wanna focus on and they're gonna do their work to be able to do that. That's why in all these, it says, um, that you'll get reports back in those areas, that they'll come and do presentations in those areas, report back to the board. What they're doing at the ground level to help, um, get to your, get to the wide, the district-wide operation plan that you have set forward and then that would be the report, so.
I was just trying to kind of add the next thought is similar to the administrators input. Do we need to ask for, they put out for our new superintendent here?
Oh, right now?
Yeah.
No, not the, no, it was the process, right?
It doesn't allow for public comment. At this point, we are public.
So not right now, but like in general, how can we do that because that's gonna be the, like, Nate will have to work with.
Yeah, should, should we move this to another meeting?
Yeah, I was just gonna say to your point, it seems like, like we are trying to manage what the schools are gonna do. I, I feel like I know what you're talking about, like, shouldn't they be telling us what the priorities?
Or at least saying like, yeah, you're, those priorities seem like in line with our needs, but we're seen in the district too.
And I think you're saying that they are though, right?
Yeah, and they're, they understand the whole mental health part, they understand the profile of graduate is really our north star, right? So we're always gonna wanna work on that. As a board, you're gonna wanna know about what's happening academically and so forth regarding the profile of graduate. Uh, but again, your job is at the vision level and at the, how to move the district. So their job is to, how to make it work within their buildings. So then that's where your reports come from. And then like Jeremy even asked, you know, um, what, what can we do to help or whatever? And then asked when you as a board can take those reports, when they come forward and say, what else do you need? How can we help as a board? And then ask questions about what's happening, because you should know that if mental health is, is something that you're working on or as a, as a district plan, uh, something that you want the district to focus on, then the, the, or the schools and the administrators should be able to tell you, here's what's happening in mental health. Here's where we see the down, here's where we see the need, here's what we're trying to improve on, here's what's going well. And then you as a board can decide, you know, if there's something else and give suggestions at that time or whatever. But, um, again, I, I don't know if the board, if, I will tell you that the ones, the things that the administrators are working on are more of the Marzano, uh, stuff, you know, the real things that you're probably not gonna want to. You, you need to stay at the, at the larger levels, so. But I apologize for not putting in the right one. I think what we can do is, I'll, I'll make sure I can send it out if I did already, everybody, and then come back at the next meeting. Again, this is gives our, uh, and then one thing that was added was, uh, community engagement is number four. So, uh, what that does, uh, again, is give, I will meet with the leadership team tomorrow and again, just they know what those are, they've seen those four and they've been talking to their site teams about it and they can start developing their plans and then we'll bring all the plans together.
So we'll revisit that. Um, move on to our fundraiser for cross-country.
Yeah, Mr. O'Leary, you, uh, I, yeah, come on up.
Yeah, I had to go to the throat.
Yeah, awesome.
So I'm Coach O'Leary, I coach the girls' team.
And I'm Caleb Crowe, I coach the boys' team.
So we've had, there's two items up there for discussion tonight. It's the fundraiser and our annual training trip. And, um, they're tied together. So it's, it's an expensive trip. We take a trip really that, that creates memories that are fantastic. We take a trip really that, that creates memories that are fantastic, creates a great opportunity for team bonding, goal setting, athletic growth, all the things that matter to us as coaches, right? Building people and connections. And it's like 80, 500 bucks to go. We're going for four days, three nights. The lodge we go to is in northern Wisconsin. It's a ski resort, but we go in August. Until last year, we've always been the only people. Last year they've been trying to grow their summer business. There were some other guests there, but for the most part, we have the place to ourselves and it gives us such opportunity to connect with these kids, these athletes and kind of set a path, right? And I've always felt that it's the most important, four days in my coaching year, and if I compare it to holiday time, it's my most important holiday because it's four days. It's not one or two days with family. It's, it's four days of real connections. So the fundraiser is the donut run. The donut run we did years ago for a lot of years, highly successful. People run and we eat donuts and they give us money. And that's kind of how it goes. And, and the whole race is set up on a premise that you get to deduct time based on the donut intake. And so you, so you pay for it financially and you might pay for it otherwise. I think last year was your first year at a donut run.
Yep.
So I don't know how you felt about that, but.
We had people running, negative amounts of time.
Oh, my gosh.
Yeah, so it's, it's just super fun. We have, I had, we do it at the middle school, the fundraiser, and this year was the first time that I had been asked to pay a fee to rent it. And I, I touched base with Dr. Newbeck and Jen Dole and we're going to figure that out. We got to figure it out. And I do, I ensure, I'm the director and I ensure, I pay insurance for every event I direct. I direct a lot of events, so, so you know, there's not liability on the school and stuff like that. We've named the superintendent as our third party insured, by our schools, the third party insured, the contact is the superintendent in your email. And then, so, but we do have connections in the insurance. There's not a, there's not a gap there. So to us, that's like really important. It comes in July and it, it's connected to a lot of stuff, right? There's good neighbor days, there's the donut run, and then we take the kids on day trips. We travel a little bit and we run a lot. We go to, we go to different cities and we run. So it's all connected. But the fundraiser pays for about half of this trip. And then we ask for parents to pay $75 per athlete. They get three nights lodging, they get 11 meals. It's great value. So it's kind of where we're at. We have to, we have to raise our half to not kind of price people out. And so then, then there always is the issue and that's in the, in the training trip section is what do you do with people that can't afford the $75? We just say, get on the bus, okay? It's covered. There's a lot of parents that care and I give them their money. So that's kind of what we're asking for. We want to, we want to run, eat some donuts and then go to northern Wisconsin and run on a ski resort. I don't know.
You nailed it.
What's the average attendance for the donut run?
Probably if we have 60 kids on the team about, oh, for the donut run.
For the donut run, yep.
Last year was about 150. We really need about 210.
That's what I was trying to get to, yes.
Yeah, and so when we did it in the past, our, our first year was like 90. And it took about three years to get to 150. This year we started at 150 and so I think we're going to have no trouble getting to our, our price point. Team Red, who I founded, we have all the equipment and so we don't charge anything because it's a relationship deal, me and with me. So it all works out well.
And where are the donuts from?
The donuts come from Dunkin' Donuts and they were, we have our captains, you know, take the step to make the contact and ask for, you know, donations. So they're free. Last year after we got our donuts donated, we realized 150 was higher than we expected. We thought we need more donuts and so then Garrus Remodeling bought more donuts, like on a match or buy one, get one free or something. So we worked with partners to get that done. But the whole concept is the cost is nothing to put on the race. It's 100% of revenue. I mean, other than sweat equity, right? And, but it's super fun to watch and super fun to do. So.
Should do it.
Registry should be open soon.
I'll be reading, you be writing.
But yeah, and that's why I want to stress the two things are tied. You got to raise the money, you got to make it affordable to take this fantastic trip. And then the value of the trip is just as coaches, it's remarkable, not just the athletic training, which is significant, significant athletic training. It's, it's the rest of the stuff, it's the turn together.
The fundraiser is perfectly funny, too. I love that it involves the community.
Yeah, yeah. So that day there's also, you know, like a free kid smile and we just kind of make it all work. Super fun.
So the ask to us is.
It would be for next meeting because this is our work session. So if you have any questions during the time, you can reach out to myself or Tom.
Okay.
Or Caleb and you can ask him.
How do we advertise? Primarily through Facebook or Team Red website. Team Red's Running Club I coordinate. Race roster is where the registration is. And then we will go around after approval and ask local places if we can have flyers and stuff. Dunkin' Donuts will put little flyers, like you go through their drive-through, they'll make sure people are aware as well. But we do it all at little or no cost, right?
I'm just asking because I have not seen it before.
Yeah, yeah, last year, so last year was first time back since about 2017, 18. And last year actually, we didn't, we hit 150 and we didn't decide to do it until about three weeks before we did it.
Oh, wow.
So we didn't plan it. Just the kids were kind of mad at me. They had done it when, before they were even cross-country athletes had participated. And one of them said, why don't we do it anymore? And I said, well, because we need your help. And what had happened, some things ran their face, parents and athletes stopped helping as much. So you're going to go get us donuts? And I said, yeah, we'll do that, which they didn't until I got a call. They said, I'm at Dunkin' Donuts. You should call Dunkin' Donuts. And I said, no, what you should do is keep the phone by your ear, stand up, walk to the counter. Ask for manager. And so we did that and they're like, oh my God, he said yes. And so, but anyway, yeah, so we like to keep, you know, our upperclassmen involved in the planning and how we do it. And we, we approach them before we decide are we doing it again. And we've had other, we raised $3,000 last year, so we'd like to raise like 4500. But 3,000 is great. And then we've had other fundraisers that are more successful, but probably not more tied to running and fun than this. And so if we just keep it affordable and keep it going, we don't have to just, I don't want to just buy what money we had to.
Tom, do you guys do it the same day as the Good Neighbor Day run?
Yeah, so the Good Neighbor Day 5K at 8:00 AM, Kid Smile at 9:15, the Donut Run at 10:00.
Okay.
Same location.
Okay, are you on the poster yet? Because that's.
I have notified Good Neighbor Days committee. I don't know if I'm on the poster, but I have notified them.
Guess who's on the committee?
Yeah.
You'll be on that.
Mike, this is something we could share on By Your Bus?
Yeah.
I could write up something if that helps. And then, but I mean, just the biggest thing to stress is that opportunities go way too fast. So we need to keep it.
And I don't know what your transition has been for graduating seniors from last year, but the parents did a wonderful job of spreading the word by word of mouth last year.
Oh, good. Good, good. Yeah, you know, we got our, we're grateful for our parents and our families. They're amazing so far.
Have you ever thought about partnering with maybe a different district in the state? I know, I know one of my favorite things, I know looking at this, you wouldn't believe it, cross-country in high school. But, but I did run cross-country and one of my favorite things is we were a southern Minnesota school. We rented out a resort up in northern Minnesota and War Road came down and we met with War Road every year and we were up there running, running dirt roads together and that's some of my fondest memories as a high schooler, so.
We have not done that. We have, our site for this training trip has changed over the years and while there's not a lot of schools that do this at the high school level, we run into them, right? We haven't at our current location. We haven't found another school that comes there. But that'd be an interesting thing to see. We've tried to get local schools to just go with us, like Pine Island and Stewartville. And they're finding some complexity in the planning and fundraising and I said, just tell people about it. We've already planned it. Just get a bus and come with us. And that would be the next piece, you know, I know we're, we're always concerned about finances, but I'm a bus driver, we're going to get there, we're not going to have, you know, all these extra expenses. So it's all going to be fine. We're going to get back too.
You've asked for approaches, you're big for a buck.
Yeah. So, but the ask, I think you asked what the ask is. The ask is when you come back next time, please say yes.
Great. If I mess it, I apologize, but how many students do usually go on this trip?
Yeah, I almost answered that first. You want that one?
Sure, about 60.
Yeah, almost everybody. Usually the people that don't go, they're like incoming seventh graders and it's not necessarily the seventh grader that's scared, it's mom and dad, because it is, it's coed and it's, you know, seven through 12. And so we, we have those conversations, we try to ease them through it. We have, three coaches will be along, we have three chaperones, chaperones are nurses. We also have a policy where during, until bedtime, your door's open so we know who's in your room. And so we have a common space where, you know, you want to be together, boy, girl or whatnot, friends, you're in the common space. And so we have a lot of things over the years we've put together to make sure that we're all kind of safe. But that's the, the biggest fear is from parents of new kids. They're like, oh, I'm sending my, you know, 12, 13-year-old girl on this trip, but we've navigated it very well, I think.
Thanks for how you do our case.
Well, thanks for having us.
Thank you.
Say yes.
Okay, we'll move on to discussion of our board handbook, pages 18 to 21. Get down there. Where did we, Lord Governance Model, is that where we went last time? Bottom of page 18.
I think the only notes were related to how specifically, like what self-evaluation tool we will use for the school board and also what self-evaluation tool we use for the superintendent that still had like just the generic. Basically it said fill in the blank with the model you use. What model do we use?
That's a fantastic question. We do the superintendent evaluation based on the goals set.
I can just say that we, my first year here, we met with, actually Barb Horn came and talked about superintendent goals and to the board at the time. And so the ones that I've been using have been based off of that format, have been based off of what MSBA has put out, that was three years ago. So the board, you know, we meet, we met at halfway through in December, our January meeting, and then we would meet again at the end of June to go through the evaluation process and the way that it was set up, the way people could add information in and so forth to, as for my roles and give input and do that. That's the way that MSBA had set up three years ago. So they may have changed it, but again, we had Barb Horn one time to come and talk to the board. The other part was of that meeting is for the superintendent to be able to let the board know what he or she needs in that, you know, and kind of how they see the board functioning. But I do know that I think MSBA has now come out with more of a self-evaluation tool for the boards to meet and really take a look at themselves as a team and how they would do that. We have not done that here in my department for, to use that tool. So maybe something that you could bring someone in from MSBA or use that model, do a research on and then, and then do that yourselves. But I do know that there are districts that do bring somebody in for, and do like a mini retreat and bring somebody in from MSBA to help you start that process of a self-evaluating model.
So the board doesn't, isn't currently doing any self-evaluation?
Current.
Okay, okay.
Should I read out to Barb and ask her to?
I don't know if Barb does anymore, but I do know that there's other people, you can reach out to MSBA, but I do know that there was another person from MSBA that would, that would come up or that came up to other districts.
Yeah, Barb's pretty busy.
And sending you the link. Yeah, I think, yeah, if that's a service they provide as part of our membership, that would be great.
Yes.
Yeah, and if they, if it's a fee, like an à la carte option we have to pay for, then I would want to know first, do they have like a self-evaluation tool or model that you would use? And then if you felt like that wasn't sufficient, we could.
I think I recall just seeing a survey on their website around that and I'm sure we don't have to use like whatever tool, if they do have a tool, I should probably.
Yeah, and I think we should also talk about how frequently we want to do that.
Once a year?
Yeah, I think at least, yeah. I actually, I think maybe every six months, but.
I'll ask about the timeframe.
For the board, like I think it'd be good for us, especially, I don't know, also new.
I was thinking it'd be good for.
It gives us a reason to touch base every six months.
I think part of the reason why you are starting this and going through this handbook is because then that's what you will evaluate yourself on is how, all the things you've talked about and put in this handbook and procedures and so forth, are you doing it and are you doing it the right way? Or, and if it's not, if, if there's something that's not really happening that way it says up there, then what do you have to do to improve that? So I'm glad that this is your first step to that self-evaluation, I think is, because we talked about that in January when we first all started, is gives you a tool, but then to know what to do, but then also to evaluate yourself that you're doing it the right way.
And everything highlighted is an area that needs specific information. So that's why it's highlighted is to say it's generic. We need to, we need to put our stamp on that.
Yeah, I think I have any questions or feedback for the rest of it?
Yeah, I think that's. Yeah, I think that's, I'll, uh, yeah. So I'll send everybody a note when I hear back from MSBA.
Sure, me, on page thirteen, um, bullet three. It doesn't sound right to me.
So working in the.
My finger's not working.
Uh, duties of the board. Bullet three.
Superintendent?
Oh, yeah.
That's, that's actually a word from.
Well, I, I was just looking at it, it says manage the school. Okay. It just didn't sound, it just sounded like, um, like we're managing, but maybe I just misread it wrong. So, okay.
No, I see what you're saying because we are not managing this.
Right. And it just seemed like, it says manage the school of the, school of the district. And I, I don't know if that's worded correctly, but we can look at that one.
Board shall superintendent the district about rules for their organization, government.
We don't prescribe textbooks, we, we'll, we'll study.
No.
Let's look at that one.
Okay. All right.
Oh, you can all see me. You can see how I'm. I was going to. I was about to just go and start changing.
Which makes it in the comment section now. All right?
Right.
Okay. Good. Well, let's, uh, I've got notes to rework. Pages eighteen to twenty-one, maybe we can just, um, come back and revisit that before we move on.
Mm-hmm.
Okay. We'll get into the first reading of our policies.
Yeah, so the first policy, um, really is of our graduation standards. And remember that the policy committee has already went through this one time and so forth. So there aren't, um, a lot of changes. The one thing that we did change here is, um, the district assessment coordinator. Um, we do not, it said before it was a curriculum director, but we no longer have a curriculum director. And so, um, we changed it to the superintendent and or designated. So it doesn't mean that, uh, myself or Mr. Albrecht would be doing the, the district assessment coordinating work. Um, but we would, we have, um, people in our district to do that, but it's not necessarily the district assessment coordinator or, or the, the district coordinator, curriculum coordinator. And so that, that was the biggest change here. It does talk about the graduation requirements. The one thing that we do a little bit different in Byron is that we do have, um, some, a course like the post-secondary high school planning, which is required and so forth. But, um, this is what I had run by the high school to make sure that it, it also, um, you can see the twenty-five careful post-high school planning. Um, and, and there are some things that have been changed, um, you know, that is part of our, um, graduation requirements that the state says we have to do. And that's the, um, personal learning or personal finance class and so forth that's coming, that has started. And so, but right now this is, this is what talks about what you need to do to graduate from Byron High School. And again, the, the only change, um, is that we are moving, moving to that superintendent and or designated. Any questions with this one? Okay. Uh, the use of peace officers, uh, this was, uh, there's no changes per state, uh, from MSBA. But I just want to call out that this was a big question last year, um, you know, regarding SROs and so forth. And how much that they can, how much they could intervene, what they can do with students and so forth. And a lot of, um, police departments had some real concerns, you know, because they couldn't do anything really and they, but, and when they can't, sometimes you put their, their officers and deputies in danger, I think, yeah. But the legislature last year did, you know, again, this was, um, remodeled a little bit last year about they can use, um, permissible or reasonable force if they need to, to, to help. And then all of our, um, just so you know, all of our administrators, as well as our, uh, emergency response teams and, and council, and specialized teachers and so forth. Our training, what's called CPI, which is how to de-escalate, how to hold kids and so forth if they are having a tough time and if they don't hurt themselves or somebody else. And then when needed, sometimes the, um, SRO needs to be part of that as well, so. Any questions with this one? The next one, six oh three, curriculum development. Uh, again, this one, since we don't have a curriculum director, would be the superintendent and or designated. I will tell you that the school board, it says here, letter B, must establish advisory committee. Um, I should probably at this time say, uh, re-establish, uh, because this year, uh, without a curriculum director, everyone's kind of doing share. It used to be, uh, the world's best workforce where we would have parents and teachers as part of that. We called that our, as they talked about curriculum and goals and so forth. And so there was one. So, um, without Jessica Denture, who was our curriculum director, kind of ran that, put all that together, brought that committee together. Again, this year, because that was such a weight, we kind of were piecing it together. We, uh, probably didn't coordinate and have an advisory committee as we should. But again, there is, uh, world's best workforce member has turned into a different type of title, but you should still have a, as you move forward into next year, be looking at, um, having such a committee to go through that again, so.
Do we have a plan to establish that next year?
Um, well, that's what I, we're working on right now with our, our leadership team is now that we know the reductions for next year. Um, the last three meetings have been putting in, uh, kind of titles and responsibilities and then who's going to take over these different areas. And so, um, it is something that's on there as when it comes to the curriculum part, again, it's being shared by many peoples. Who, who does this advisory?
It's required by statute, right? So it cannot be missed.
No.
Okay.
Okay. And the next one. It's, uh, disposition of pharmaceutical waste and, um, there really is no changes except for, um, that we are using instead of our buildings and grounds manager because we don't have one. But when I talk to the licensed school nurses, they've always kind of did it anyway. They are the ones at the end of the year will go through what's left over. And they're the ones who make sure that, uh, what's left and that's there is, is properly disposed of, so. But in our policy, we haven't seen in a while, uh, they talked about the buildings and grounds manager. But they've said they were really the ones to do it. So we just changed that in here, so.
Seems like a qualification thing too, like a mission or something.
Yeah. Uh, this technology disaster pilot, you heard about from Jen, you know, we would be in trouble if we didn't have technology. So this, um, really didn't have any, uh, changes to it. And it just talks about that if there is a disaster, we do have our emergency, um, response team. And part of that is looking at all of our technology and how do you, how fast can you get that back up? Where is things backed up? Where is the house and so forth so that we can get those, um, in a, and we hope that you never have to use this. But if it is, then Jen has looked at this and made sure that it's all updated, so. Uh, two oh one is the legal status of the school board. And, uh, so really also it's, there's just some legal references at the very end. So it just talks about, uh, this is an MSBA policy that has changed the legal references. But it just talks about you as a school board and, um, you know, your members, um, are, you have seven members. And for a term of four years, kind of goes through all of those and some of your powers and duties. But they really only changed this is the legal references at the end. Policy six twelve, again, uh, development of parent and family engagement policies for Title One. And so Title One program is a federal program, um, where we receive funding for, um, to help kids that need the extra help and so forth. And part of that, part of that program and part of our procedures is that, um, we actually have a meeting with parents, for parents who are part of Title One. And so they know what's, what their children are being asked. So sometimes they have to leave class to come get the extra help. Um, they are, they do get feedback from parents and so forth. There's a form that gets sent out saying that you're part of Title One and we're having this informational meeting, come and do that. So they try to engage the parents and we follow that, so. And, uh, right now, um, most of our Title Ones schools are at, uh, elementary level, K five level. So April Rotemeyer is the one who kind of organizes that and, and the second staff so that, um, when we go to get the funding, it's one of our category of funding, that we have the right people in, in that as well, so. And then, um, ones over here, harassment and violence. Um, the biggest one here, um, is, uh, I'm just looking at my notes here. All of that, they, all, what they did was updated the definition of a disability. So everything else is the same at this point. They just added this for the disability part.
Under investigation, it talks about a human rights officer. Who is our human rights officer?
Um, well, right, for part of MSB is also Christina Gilstock.
Okay.
These are so.
To be, um, so if someone needed to know, how would, how would someone who is reporting know who the human rights officer is?
Usually, well, a lot of times now they can go on the, I'm not sure if it's on their website. I know under Title Nine, it's on their website of who, who you would report to for Title Nine.
Okay.
A lot of times, uh, human rights officers, a lot of times, uh, human resource director, human op, and that's, that's.
Right.
That's the superintendent this time. So, but no, it doesn't say in here necessarily the exact person.
Okay.
They'll go to their administrator and then the administrator will bring it, send it.
Okay.
And then the last one is the, uh, development and maintenance of inventory. Uh, so this is what was added is what's in red here. Just talks about that if we purchase something that's, uh, the federal funds, that's over five thousand dollars or twenty-five thousand dollars or created with other funds. And it automatically goes into, uh, again, can explain better, and I think goes in this accounting system for the depreciation or so forth into fixed assets. It goes into our books for so long as fixed assets. So this is just a, um, an up, an update of what that means and when you would use, um, you know, again, five thousand dollars for federal or, or twenty-five thousand dollars for others. That's something that Dan and the, the money people were involved, so. Okay? All right.
A recap of our listening session.
Yeah, you want me to talk? Sure. So we had, we had one that filled out a paper and then we had, uh, one more, um, that was allowed to talk in the, um, that didn't fill out one, but that was totally fine. Um, we were, um, at first it was, um, kind of more directed about no public comment from.
During our deliberations?
Yeah, during our deliberations. Um, she said that people felt like they were silenced with, with that. Um, but they, um, um, they, they thought that process was flawed perhaps. And then, um, we, we discussed that, um, that as an opportunity to learn from and use it as a tool to grow from. Um, we, the, the most, the main concern was rebuilding trust with the community and passing the referendum. Um, and, um, just that there was, if I could read my own writing. Uh, there needs to be, uh, a better balance. Um, I'm not sure where I was going with that. Can you expand on that?
I think, ma'am, there needs to be a better communication with the community so that we can solicit the opinion of the entire community, including people, including people who have students who go to Byron School District. Including the people who have kids in the Byron School District who live in Byron. Um, so we need to develop, uh, an effective way of distributing messages to the entire community that the school serves. As well as, um, soliciting their feedback and opinion on topics that we need to know. And we have not, we, we don't have good ideas at this point.
That could be something we can definitely solicit.
Yeah.
Yeah, especially with that upcoming referendum, some big stuff to communicate coming up.
Okay. Uh, all right, we'll move on to item six, action on Nate Welbourn's superintendent contract for twenty-five to twenty-eight. Any discussions or questions? Or would entertain a motion?
I make the motion to approve Nate Welbourn's superintendent.
Second.
Motion and a second. Any other discussion or questions? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. All opposed. Motion carries. Contract is approved. Of leaving this, yes, with one final item on the agenda.
Making motion to adjourn.
So.
Second. Sorry.
Motion and a second on adjournment. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed. We are adjourned.